The Houston Community College Board of Trustees meeting will begin soon. Thanks. The Houston Community College Board of Trustees meeting will begin at three P M. Thanks for joining us. Please wait until then. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. The special meeting for January 18th, 2023 will now come to order at?
Two thirty-five P. M.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services office. No citizens have signed up to speak this evening. We will now begin with item A, redistricting update, website changes, public comments, community meeting overview. This is a report item, no action is required. Chancellor Maldonado?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Board knows, we've been holding our district meetings, across the district, rather, meetings related to the redistricting that's resulting from the 2020 census, and this is an update being brought, presented by Lisa McBride from Thompson-Horton and Edgar Colón on the latest of the community meetings. And with your permission, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. McBride.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Maldonado. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be with you. Some of you I've been with as we have completed your community meetings, and as Chancellor Maldonado has indicated, today's purpose is to update you on some website changes, to make our website more user-friendly and to provide more information to the community, particularly during this time period as they're going to community meetings, reviewing our maps and providing feedback to us. And I'll give a high-level overview of some of the information that we have been receiving at our community meetings. We're only four meetings in, so we've got five more meetings to go. You will be getting detailed summaries of the comments that were made at the meetings, as well as any written comments provided, or any written comments provided online, or maps provided online. So let's talk about a few website updates. We got some feedback that our original deadline for comments being February 1st and our original deadline for maps being January 15th. Number one, it was confusing to have two different deadlines, and number two, anyone wanting to submit a map by the January 15th deadline, their community meeting may have been after that. So in response to that feedback from trustees and from the public, we've changed the deadline for maps and comments through the online portal to February 28th. This extension gives members of the community the ability to not only go to their individual community meeting, but to go to any community meeting, because all community meetings will be done by February 2nd, and then our public hearing is on February 15th. And so after going to those community meetings, seeing the presentations online, or seeing the videos online, participating in the public hearing, they still have until the end of the month, February 28th. If there's something additional in writing, if they didn't express what they wanted to orally at any of those meetings or in writing prior, they still have some additional time February 28th to provide that information, and that's well in advance of your April board meeting at which you're scheduled to take action. So anything received between February 15th, which is the public hearing, and your April board meeting will be supplemented and summarized for you as well, so that you have it in front of you before you take any action on any map. And so because of that extension to the deadline, we've updated our website with that information. The flyers that went out advertising the community meetings included that extended deadline, and at each community meeting, we are making sure to emphasize that over and over again, including a specific slide that's bolded in red at the end of the presentation that says February 28th, if you have any additional written comments that you want to get into us. We've also online updated the redistricting timeline to include information that we've included in other places on your website. Number one, the community forums. We have a separate community forum page that lists all of the dates of the community forums, but on the timeline, we have placed the date range for the community forum. We've also placed the new extended deadline. So no matter where people go on our website, we're trying to make it user-friendly. They don't have to go just to one location. If they happen to be on the timeline, they get the same information if they happen to be on the community presentations page. And I've drawn your attention to a few of those added features. Then on the how to submit a map or comment, in the feedback section of the website, one of the things that trustees had asked for was a step-by-step guide, how to submit a written comment, how to submit a map. And so we've done so, provided a guide that includes screen captures, what your screen should look like if you're accessing the right part of our website, and what confirmations you get back from the system. That guide we showed you at your last board meeting, we've uploaded it to the website. So you can download that guide, have that beside you as you're attempting to upload a comment, or attempting to upload a map, you know, so you can match your screen to what's in the guide and make sure that you're following the steps appropriately. Then in the proposed map section, if you will recall, when we first presented the initial maps to the Board in September of 2022, we presented Map One, and that was the map the Board wanted presented to the community for that first thirty days. Then in October, we presented Map One A, which cleaned up a few things, a couple of precinct splits from Map One, and so Map One A is what the Board wanted on the website to receive community feedback on. So both Map One and both One A were on the website. We got some feedback that that might be confusing since they are a progression. Map One A is a progression of Map One. So we've taken down Map One and just have Map One A with the message, this is the map the Board would like feedback on, but all other presentations presented to the Board and all other maps are available on the website. And if you specifically want to see all other maps, here's how you do so, and we've included the link trail there. So people can look at Map One A, provide a comment, but then if they want to look at Map One, if they want to look at Map Two, and its progeny, remember we have Two A, Two B, and Two C. In addition to Map Two, they can do so as well, and we tell them exactly which presentation to go into to look at those maps. So we made that clarification and appreciate that comment to clarify that part of the website. Then in the community events section of the website, that section of the website now has the link for the live stream. Remember that all nine of these community meetings, in addition to being in-person, are available through live stream, and we don't have a different link, because we didn't want that to be confusing for the public. It is the same link. If you go six-thirty on the day that your community meeting, or another community meeting that you want to go to, is having their meeting, that is the link for that live stream. So as you can see, we have the date of the meeting, what district and the location also available for folks if they are interested in attending in person, but they don't have to, they can access the live stream. Then I wanted you to see a little bit more on our community presentations webpage. In addition to having the live stream link, we have the listing of all presentations, because individuals might be interested in going to a single-member district presentation in which they don't live, but they have an interest. Maybe it's their neighbor, or maybe it's a single-member district that their single-member district is giving population to, or taking population from. So we wanted to make sure that everyone had access to all meetings. One thing that has been updated even since the preparation of this presentation is there is an additional column now for each of the single-member district meetings. So after forum location, there is another header that says download presentation. All nine of the presentations have already been uploaded to this site. So if someone wants to preview before even going to Single Member District Nine's presentation on February 2nd, if they just want to look at it tonight, they could open up that presentation. All nine of them are available online. The presentations are being professionally recorded, and so once those recordings and production is done, the next column on this website will be the recording for each meeting. So you have the live stream link, you have the information by column for each individual single-member district. After the forum location currently on the website is a column that includes all of the presentation links. And then once those recordings are available, there'll be yet another column that has the recordings. So individuals have multiple ways to access these meetings. They can go in-person, they can watch the live stream link, or they can watch a recording. Individuals that come in-person, we're providing the QR code, so they don't necessarily have to go to our website for the presentation, but they can take a photo of the QR code and go directly to the presentation while in the meeting as well. Just a way to save paper, but to allow people in the meeting to have access color to our presentations either on their smartphone, or once they get home on their computers, so they can enlarge however they see fit, and they're not limited to the size of a piece of paper, because some of these maps you may want to enlarge on a larger screen. And then at the bottom of this website, we've also included the posting that went in the Chronicle and several community impact papers and other community partners advertising our community forums. We've included that notice at the bottom of the community presentation page in that red rectangular box, and all the languages we translated that posting into, both for purposes of newspaper posting and for the website. Any questions about changes to the website before I go over what's been going on during our redistricting forums for the four that we have so far?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Thank you, and it's good to see you.
With the website?
Yes, ma'am.
You were asking if we have any questions about that?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate, I know at our forum, we continue to say that the other maps were on the website, and you know, they can go to the link to that. I was wondering, to make it easier for community, because that's what this should be all about. Could the, where you have the map, One A, could there be something like other maps there so that they don't have to go and look through, find a PowerPoint presentation, and then scroll through it and try to dissect it?
It's the will of the Board, if we have permission to put the other maps along with One A, is what Dr. Flowers is asking.
It's this question, Ms. McBride. I assume that the reason Map One A was by itself was because that was the map that we agreed on as a Board?
That's correct.
And I don't know, I just think it might be a little confusing to have them all. But that's just my opinion.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So then if I make sure I'm getting clarity on your statement, the Map One A, you're saying that's the one we agreed on, so that's the one that's going to get voted on?
No, no, no. I said that's the one we agreed on.
To present for a public comment?
To go, yes. And they use that as the guide to make the changes and suggestions and comments about what they wanted to see other than that Map One A. Is that correct?
So, community members, we do have at least one comment, well, several comments in Single Member District Four that specifically said they prefer Map Two, so they are accessing Map Two, and we do have two written comments that say a preference for Map Two, and actually someone submitting Map Two and saying they prefer that over Map One A. So as far as people who have commented so far, they appear to be accessing the other maps, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because I know that we decided, like you stated earlier, that Map One was, well, Map One A was a progression of One.
Yes, ma'am.
And when you had One and One A up, it was confusing the community. So that's why I was saying, well, maybe the community would still get confused if we put them all on one page with the One A, when One A is the map that we actually presented to the community to use as a guide to make suggestions and comments about what they felt was best for whatever district they were concerned with.
Well, I guess you're addressing me, so that's fine. I just liked, you know, to share that it was myself that shared about the confusion of One, and I appreciate you taking that down. And so I understand that from the dialogue here, that my request is not acceptable. So thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Trustee Thomas.
So, Lisa, as far as the direction from the Board, for the record, you understood the direction from the Board, correct?
The direction that I understood from the Board was to present in September, Map One, and then when we progressed to Map One A, to present Map One A on the website.
So this is nothing new to you?
That's not, that's not new to me.
I just wanted it for the record to be really clear that you were charged with, and it was clear in terms what the Board charged you with, right? Okay. And then also just making sure we're being consistent from meeting to meeting as well. Obviously, they differ, right? I get that. And allowing our community to give input and so forth, very important. But consistency is also very important to the Board, to make sure that they know that we are unified in terms of the Board, in terms of the direction that we're headed, and how we're obtaining this input via you, so that they understand that, okay? So that's me. That's my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Johnson.
Hello, Lisa. One thing I would like to see is the demographics, the numbers, where they can see, because I know people were referring to 2010, what the numbers looked like with the demographics, the... I know people were referring to 2010, what the numbers looked like with the demographics. You know, each district had their own numbers. They were either low in the reason why some people got more things added to them and some people can't have things added to them. It has to do with those numbers. So I don't know if we can have that added so maybe they can get a better understanding. It's just, it's more than just moving lines, that you're looking at the numbers and the population that we have to give by law.
So one thing, if it is the will of the Board, that we can do on the page that shows Map 1A, directly above it is a picture of your current boundaries. And so we could put right beside it the chart, the four quadrant chart, that shows the demographics based on your 2020 numbers. If we did nothing, it would show that we're out of balance, that 19.9% deviation. And then in the box where it asks to comment on Map 1A, we can put the demographics that go with Map 1A, once the nine districts have been rebalanced, so you can see what the new numbers are. If that is the will of the Board, add those two charts, one going with your current boundaries, but your 2020 numbers, your 2020 numbers as redistricted under Map 1A. So it would be adding two charts to that part of your website, if that's the will of the Board.
I like that idea.
Or even if it's, even if you, you know, if that's going to help them understand it, or what the census gave us and the reason why. I think the census numbers are just as important because it lets you know which districts were lacking.
So these are the census numbers. So this would be the total population by single-member district and by demographic group, expressed as a raw number, expressed as a percentage, then voting age population expressed as a percentage, and then citizen voting age population expressed as a percentage. Is that what you're looking for? Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Trustee.
This is Dr. Van Veldt. Yes, I want to, it's good to see you guys. Can you see me? Hold on. Let me see if I can turn on this camera. There it is. Give it a second. Okay, there I am. I want to address a technical glitch that I noticed during the meetings for the closed captioning. It is not functional as it should be. When we are having the discussions, the wording on the screen is completely different from the wording that's been said. So we need to address the IT glitch in the closed captioning on our remote meetings so that people who are looking at the screen can actually read what we're seeing rather than some interesting language that I've never seen. So Jim, if we could look at that, that would be helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for saying that, trustee, because I saw that too. Thank you. I forgot about that.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
It was mumbo jumbo.
Any other comments?
Okay. So we have completed four redistricting community forums for Single Member District 5, 2, 3, and 4. 4 was just last night. I was with Dr. Flowers. Each one of these, the attendance at the community meetings is getting bigger and bigger and bigger with each one of these. We're getting some very thoughtful questions. At Single Member District 3, there was expression from both members of LULAC and people who were not members of LULAC in support of Map 1A. At Single Member District 4, there was support expressed for Map 2. Also, support expressed for not wanting to pit communities against each other by adopting Map 2, realizing that Map 2 and some of the progeny of Map 2, 2A, 2B, 2C, leave the community with a choice in terms of increasing the population of Single Member District 3. You either do it by taking from 8 and then 2, or you do it from taking elsewhere from 4, or you do it from taking in two different places from 9. The community didn't like that choice. The community, or at least some of the members who were present last evening, they would rather, if you recall, the nine map drawing principles that the Board has adopted, the eighth one was basically using your 2010 map as a baseline and making moves only to the extent necessary to comply with the other redistricting principles or with federal or state law. They would prefer, some who spoke out at that community forum, that that not be a baseline assumption, but that we start from scratch if we need to with respect to the map so that neighborhoods are not pitted against one another, including the possibility of drawing a single-member district map on the basis of the City of Houston super neighborhoods, making sure to keep neighborhoods together. Of course, the issue with that is not keeping a neighborhood together, it's which neighborhoods to place together in a single, single-member district. But that is, just want you to see some of the thoughtful discussion that was happening at the single-member district meetings. At several of the meetings, including last night, precinct chairs were there, very much interested in what would be happening to their precincts, and wanting to make sure that the Board took into account with respect to any rebalancing the impact on voter participation. And that, of course, is something that you're having another expert look at as part of the potential vote dilution analysis. We're looking at whether or not our different communities of concentrated minorities have the same voting strength under any new map that the Board is considering, based on the electoral patterns that we've experienced previously. So we know how precincts vote. If we put them in a new combination together in a new single-member district, how do we project those precincts to perform based on their past performance? So you're going to get that analysis, and I think that that would be something that for those precinct chairs, they would be very happy that that's something that you're taking into account because they were concerned about that. Also had some comments about why are we focusing so much on population? But as you know, this is, that's the name of the game when we know population shifts are being driven by economics. So people very tied to the community and understanding why some parts of town are seeing an influx in population and other parts of town are seeing a decrease, or not really a decrease in population, but a rate of growth that's not as fast as other parts of town, attributing it to economic factors. So some really thoughtful conversations along those lines. There was one comment that I really appreciated at the Single Member District 3 meeting, although that we've done our best to have the closed captioning and language interpreters and our notices to go out in other languages. At the meeting itself, our agenda and the comment sign-up form was only in English. And so we had a community member point that out to us. So beginning with tomorrow's meeting, we believe that we're going to have translation available so that the agenda itself is translated into Spanish and the comment form to sign up to speak. In addition to us asking for comments that's translated into Spanish, that form will also be translated into Spanish. So appreciated our coat tail being pulled by that community member so that we could update that process for the ongoing community meetings. And then we did have some community members that really wanted assurance that their thoughts, whether expressed orally at the SMD meetings or expressed in writing, were going to be considered by the Board. I assured the community that that was the whole purpose of this and that all of this information is being recorded so that trustees could see the single-member district meetings of other SMDs that they're not at. But also the comments were going to be compiled and provided to the trustees for purposes of the public hearing and in advance of your April timeline. So that's just a flavor of the comments that we have received. We've received some support for Map 1A, but we've also received some support for Map 2 or reimagining the map because there is some concern about Third Ward staying whole and in a single-member district and that being in Single Member District Number 4. Any other comments or questions?
Trustee Laredo.
I know that in some of our maps here, it shows District 8 is at Frogga, but this one, you're having Codwell. So have they been changed? For District 8, we're meeting in Frogga Campus, not Codwell.
Okay. Let me make sure that this is incorrect. Edgar, can you look on the, can you look on the website? Because I know what's on the website is correct, and I thought this was the same as on the website. It may have been that this particular slide captures an earlier version, and I apologize. It is, okay. All right. I just want to make sure that what's on the website is correct. Okay.
I have it at two locations.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that would be very impossible. I just want to give you that assurance that what's on the website is the correct one.
Other questions?
So we just double-checked what's on the website is Frogga. This slide was before that change. I apologize. All right. Well, I'll be seeing the rest of you at your single-member district meetings. We conclude those on February 2nd, and then I will see you again as a body on February 15th here for the public hearing. Thank you so much.
So much, Lisa. Thank you. Their motion to approve Item B, excuse me, a one-time variance to Board bylaws relating to Article G, Section 9C, I'm sorry, 9D and 9E.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. We will, excuse me, we will now have discussion on the item.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm doing this space. I'd like, I'd like to ask a few questions so that we can have clarity concerning why we are utilizing the bylaws in this way. So if General Counsel, if our Board Counsel can come to the podium, I'd like to ask the questions, please.
It's going to do that.
Okay. The first, the first question is, why are we considering this particular action for the bylaws so that we can have a public record clarity for why we're doing this at this time?
Sure. At the last meeting, which was on January 11th, this item was on the agenda. It was postponed to the next meeting at that time, but because of the timing and the holiday on Monday, we didn't have five business days to add this to the agenda and distribute the information to Board members. And your Board bylaws require that all agenda materials and items be distributed to Board members five business days before the meeting. So in order to consider this, this would be four business days notice, we need to temporarily waive that requirement in the Board bylaws to allow the Board to take action on the next agenda item.
And can you explain to us why we had to do this? What happened? What was the action that took place before we were able to vote on the item?
Sure. There was a, there was a medical emergency at the last meeting that required the Board to postpone this item to a later meeting so that they could take action.
And so let the record reflect that we had a medical emergency and we did take appropriate action to continue the item for this particular meeting and that the five business days would have hindered us from making that decision. I wanted to make sure that this was part of the public record comment because we understand as a Board that our bylaws are the laws that protect us as a Board and that we adhere to our bylaws unless there is an emergency that we must consider. So thank you for the clarification and thank you, fellow Board members, my colleagues, for accommodating me to ask these questions.
Thank you for asking the questions, Trustee Starwark. Any other, any comments or questions? Trustee Wilson?
I'm particularly concerned about two issues in the timing of this. Had this come up during the five years of the contract, the first, second, third, or fourth year?
To clarify, Trustee Wilson, this is to vote on the engagement of ACCT. The item that you're referencing is on the agenda for the regular meeting.
Excuse me?
And I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. Other comments on this item? We are now ready to vote on Item B.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
The motion passed unanimously with a vote of 9 to 0.
Their motion to approve Item C, approve engagement of Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, to facilitate a board retreat to develop a leadership succession plan.
So moved.
Second.
It's a Sharon. Okay. Okay, it has been moved and second. We will now have a discussion on the item. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, well, it's really very self-explanatory. We have, the Board has authorized the Chair, which is me, to engage ACCT to facilitate the board retreat, which we will be having at the end of the month. And that's the whole gist of this, this item. And at that retreat, as stated, we will be developing a leadership succession plan.
Thank, Madam Chair?
Questions, comments?
I think it's important to note for all that this is something we're doing together in collaboration with our Chancellor, that this is something that we are planning ahead of time so that there is, as we, as we talk about leadership succession and what that means in terms of a transition, for me, for me as one trustee, that is my understanding.
And that's great because the purpose of the succession is like you stated, you know, we want to make sure when we transition leadership, then it's a smooth transition. And we're still focused on the operations of the college. The Board is working together. The Chancellor is working with the Board. We're working as a team to make a smooth transition in order for us to keep our college moving forward so we won't have any failure in the process.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Venus Starwark.
I'd also like to say that the Association of Community College Trustees has a long and successful history of assisting community colleges in this process. As they represent 1,200 community colleges and 6,500 trustees, they know and understand the process. They know and understand how to maintain a professional decorum for the process, and they know and understand trustees and what our responsibilities are. So thank you for this. This is good for us as a team, and this is good that ACCT will be guiding us through this process.
Want to be a very successful progress, process, and I'm glad we decided as a Board to move forward with it. Okay? Are there any other comments or questions about that? Okay. Well, this meeting, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm just excited. It was so cool. Okay, we're ready to vote on Item B.
C. Item C. I see. Sharon, my vote is yes.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of 9 to 0.
Special meeting will now adjourn to a closed session, our executive session, under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, and our and our 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act, as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the board on any matter considered in closed session, such final action, vote, or decision shall be taken up in the open session portion of the meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. The meeting adjourned to closed session at...
3:12 PM.
Good afternoon and welcome to the first regular meeting of the HCC Board of Trustees for 20
Do we have to adjourn, do we have to adjourn the primary?
See, hey gentlemen, quit telling me to hurry. We did. The open portion of this meeting of the special meeting of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees reconvened at
5:05 p.m.
The meeting of the, uh, the special meeting is adjourned at
5:05 p.m.
Okay, all right. Good afternoon and welcome to the first regular meeting of the HCC Board of Trustees for 2023. We would like to welcome everyone back as we look forward to a great year. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System will now come to order on January 18, 2023 at
5:05 p.m.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. At this time, please join me for the prayer followed by the pledge. Trustee Laredo will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to give a prayer of gratitude today. I am so grateful that all of you have chosen to be here at HCC and support this institution. I am grateful for the capable and talented peers on this board. I'm grateful to God for giving us this mission to work together to move the, the college forward. I am so grateful for the health of our trustees. I am grateful for a capable, dedicated chancellor. We have truly been blessed. I'm grateful for a talented and devoted administration, staff and faculty. And I am grateful for our students who work so hard to better their futures, the futures of their families, and the future of the college. So, you know, just, I want to give thanks that we are so blessed to, to have this institution where we all can come together, work to make the community better. So, in God's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
We are now ready to approve the minutes for the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, Audit Committee, Board Governors Committee of the whole, External Relations Committee, regular and special meeting on December 14, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for December 2022?
So moved, second.
It has been moved in second. Are, are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, we are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes for December 2022.
Karen, did you get mine?
No, I have not. Did it pop up?
Uh, no, it didn't. So it's yours for me.
Yes, I'm waiting for trustee Laredo, flowers, and Dr. Tavaz. They're gonna refresh, let me have them refresh it.
Well, I can just tell you.
Give us one second.
Well, mine's a yes, because it's just
Okay, received.
Need to get back y'all.
Karen, I'll be a yes.
Okay, received. And trustee Laredo? Received, thank you. The motion, uh, the voting is closed. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we will now move to our awards, presentations, and recognitions. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards, presentations, and recognition.
We're pleased now to recognize the success of the 2022 HCC Foundation Faculty and Staff Campaign, made possible, possible by the generosity of H- made possible by the generosity of HCC employees who contributed over $150,000 on behalf of support for HCC students. The campaign total includes the success of the 2022 Beddicheck Orman Auction, the capstone to the annual giving campaign, which raises valuable support for faculty professional development. A portion of this year's auction proceeds also benefited the Joyce Roberta J.R. Miller Alper Emergency Fund for Adjunct Faculty. We're very grateful for the generous investment of our dedicated HCC faculty and staff who elect to make a personal philanthropic donation on behalf of Houston Community College. It's our pleasure to invite HCC Foundation Board Faculty Liaisons, Dr. Antrice Bajay and Dr. Mary Lawson, to join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for the presentation. We also invite to come forward Karen Schmidt, HCC Foundation President, and any HCC Foundation Board members that are here in attendance this afternoon. All right, congratulations to our faculty and staff on a job well done. Trustees and chancellor, if you would, remain in front of the dais for the final recognition. We'll provide an opportunity for comments after the student success presentations. At this time, we'd like to recognize our student success stories for January 2023. We ask that Kairo Gonzalez would come forward for a photo with the trustees and chancellor of our college readiness student success story, followed by Central College student Meg Potich. She'll also be joining in recognitions with Doctors Desmond Lewis, ABC for College Readiness, and Mudassir Siddiqui, president for the Central College. If you'd both come forward now. All right, thank you and congratulations to each of you. And trustees and chancellor, you may now return to the dais. We'll see their videos by the students very shortly. At this time, we'd like to invite HCC Foundation President Karen Schmidt and the HCC Foundation Faculty Liaisons, Dr. Antrice Bajay and Dr. Mary Lawson. Please come up to the podium for brief remarks regarding the 2022 Annual Campaign Check Presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Board Chair Linton Gary and trustees and Chancellor Maldonado. I am honored to acknowledge the outstanding results of the 2022 Faculty and Staff Campaign and to express my sincere appreciation to all HCC faculty and staff who helped make our annual campaign such a wonderful success with their generous and personal support. Thank you so very much. Our employees' generous philanthropic investment in HCC, year over year, increases our ability to make a difference in the community we serve. I want to especially thank our Foundation Faculty Liaisons, Dr. Bajay and Dr. Lawson, for their leadership on the Foundation Board and on behalf of the Annual Employee Giving Campaign. At this time, I'm pleased to invite Dr. Bajay and Dr. Lawson to say a few words. And I just want you to know that when these two women took over the campaign, they have now more than doubled employee giving to the Faculty Staff Campaign. Absolutely fabulous. And I just have to say that these are the types of women that none of their colleagues can say no to.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, they can't tell us no because we don't accept no. So with that being said, again, thank you, Karen. Mary and I are honored to have the opportunity in the role, in these roles, as faculty liaison on the HCC Foundation Board to acknowledge and celebrate our fellow HCC colleagues for their generous support. As HCC employees, we give, excuse me, we each give of our time and our talents every day in the classroom and in our workspaces. We are so, so grateful for those employees who choose to make a personal financial donation to benefit HCC students and their fellow faculty members. We encourage our employee donors to share what motivates them to make a personal donation in support of the, of HCC student success. The words of our colleagues capture their motivation for their why they give. And here's an example. I vividly recall my college experience. It was a struggle. My parents provided zero support, but I was able to create a successful path on my own. I don't want to see another student struggle the way that I did. Another colleague writes, "Individuals should have equal access to certain opportunities despite their ability to pay. Education is one of those opportunities." And this simple phrase perhaps best sums the motivation to help others, quote unquote, "Because I am blessed to be a blessing." Truly, my fellow colleagues, faculty, and staff inspire me with their words and their passion for our students, a passion that is matched in action and indeed in the form of financial donations. Across the campaign, we highlight the message, quote unquote, "Eagles helping eagles." And the heart of our HCC faculty and staff shine throughout the year. In 2022, our HCC employees truly opened their hearts and raised an amazing $150,402.76 in donation and support. So I want to say that again. We raised $150,402.76. We were thrilled to see this total shared by Chancellor Maldonado on the big screen at last Friday's convocation. What a proud and exciting moment for all of our employee donors. And support for the campaign across the HCC community. We thank you, Chancellor Maldonado, our college presidents, HCC leadership, for your support each and every year, year over year. We thank the HCC Foundation for their support behind the scenes to launch the campaign year after year, and especially the 100% giving support from the HCC Foundation staff for the campaign, and above all, for the support of our wonderful community of generous and dedicated employees, faculty, staff, administration, who give of their heart each day to help our students soar. Thank you so much. And so now I want to invite my fellow faculty liaison and sister in the struggle trying to raise plenty funds for students to offer her reflections, Dr. Mary Lawson.
We look just alike, right? Thank you, Antrice. I join you in extending appreciation to my fellow colleagues who support the annual employee giving campaign. For those of you who made a first-time gift, to everyone who is a loyal payroll contributor and make a donation each pay period, we say thank you. Your donations make a difference. Together, when we combine our giving, it adds up to a big result on behalf of more opportunities for our students and for our faculty in need. Our colleagues hear us say it many times across each campaign and across the year that just $10 a pay period helps pay for a class, an entire class for an HC student. The total raised for the 2022 campaign overall is even more impressive when reflected against the life challenges we have all faced and continue to face during these uncertain times. Antrice and I were especially honored to work with our faculty colleagues to continue to raise funds this year on behalf of the Joyce Roberta J.R. Miller Alper Emergency Fund for Adjunct Faculty and to raise awareness and support during the campaign for this important fund to assist adjunct faculty in need. Antrice and I are both humbled to serve on the Foundation Board and grateful for the opportunity to see the success of the campaign grow each year and our colleagues at HCC make this success possible. I want to close with a quote from another caring employee donor, "Our students are our future." We couldn't say it better, and thanks to the generosity of our fellow faculty and staff who give so generously each year during the campaign, the future is brighter for our students. Thank you to each of my fellow HCC employees who helped us raise the bar for more students to take that first step up the ladder toward a brighter future for themselves and for their families. You make me HCC proud.
Thank you all. Okay, welcome to, well, welcome to the podium, Dr. Desmond Lewis, who will be introducing the student success story of Kairo Gonzalez, followed by Dr. Mudassir Siddiqui, who will be introducing the student success story of Meg Potich.
Good evening. Houston Community College has proven to be a lifeline for so many students in so many ways throughout its many years of existence. Kairo Gonzalez reemphasizes the quality of education that HCC provides for its students. You see, he believes that one of the biggest successes is the expertise of our faculty. He found that our faculty are subject matter experts in many different fields and have become excellent role models for those wanting to learn. He is very, very grateful for the financial support and the mentoring that he's received from the college while acquiring a degree from HCC in history that put him in a perfect position to move on to gain a bachelor's and master's degree from the university of his choice. And now we're going to present his story. Thank you.
The reason why I wanted to study history is because throughout my journey, elementary, middle school, and high school, a lot of my teachers did not understood the subject that they were teaching. So me, I decided I wanted to teach history because I want to be proficient in what I'm teaching. And if I got a chance to teach that to my kids, then there you go. They know the history. They know that I can be a person that they can rely on. The reason why I chose HCC is because it's such a beautiful campus, especially here at Spring Branch. And I felt that it had so much culture, not just it was majority white or majority black or majority Hispanic. It's just mixed with everybody. And plus, there was a lot of international students that come here. So I love the culture, and that's the reason why I wanted to stay here. The instruction has been ultimately very supportive. Every single time when I have a face-to-face class, they've always been supportive, especially when COVID hit. COVID hit, that's when I knew that HCC was very, very supportive of their students. Because we all know that it was very difficult at COVID when we went to online. It was so difficult for the students and teachers, but I knew that the teachers had the capability of helping the students. My next steps is to go to Texas Southern. And I plan on getting my bachelor's and my master's at Texas Southern, and I want to actually teach at a college level. Dr. Lewis has carried me under his wing and everything, and I decided like I love teaching at a college level. And I think helping students and bringing them to their potential is such a beautiful thing, especially for as a teacher aspect. I was a part of the bridge program by basically writing notes for Dr. Lewis and basically working in the background. The bridge pointed program is, in the simplest form, is to bring scholarships to everybody here at HCC. I would say the most simplest form I would say right here at HCC is just go to the school. So it's such a beautiful, you will have some great support when you're, especially when you're in your field. A lot of these historians or even mathematicians, it doesn't matter what type of subject, they are proficient in their studies. They understood the topics, and I think I have learned so much from them, and that's the great part about HCC.
Trustee and chancellor, I'm here to share another story, a story of Meg Potich. She's the CEO of Harmony House here in Houston. She is an alumnus of Houston Community College and thankful to HCC for giving her experiences as a student to quickly step onto the right path for her career. She believes that she would not have gotten to the position she is currently in at such a younger age without the help and guidance of Houston Community College. She was introduced to the nonprofit world of helping others through opportunities offered at HCC for career choices. She expressed gratitude for HCC affordability and high-quality education, and here is her story.
HCC brought a very important opportunity to me. One semester I took a course which required outside volunteer work. They had a list of places where you could volunteer. We had to do a certain number of hours. And on this list was Magnifica House, which provides homeless services in the Houston area. And it was right next to HCC Central Campus. And it was a clubhouse to help homeless people who are experiencing mental health issues. I had a great experience at HCC. When I went to school, all classes were in person. There was no virtual. And so I really enjoyed most of my professors. I have a few that I still remember to this day. They taught me a lot. They were very relatable. And I learned to love to read. I learned to love to volunteer. HCC definitely helped me achieve what I'm doing now. I think that HCC introduced me to the work that I'm doing in this capacity. If it weren't for HCC, I don't think that I would be in this position where I am, especially not at this age yet. I think I would still be struggling to try to find that route to get here. They, they sent me directly here. You know, they, they made the path shorter for me, and that's been... that's been priceless. I would like to thank HCC for giving me this education, for making it affordable, and for providing me an opportunity to serve others and do what I love to do every day as a career. Thank you, HCC.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, this concludes the award presentations and recognitions.
Thank you, Todd. We open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts, an overview from conferences or workshops attended, or to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. We ask trustees to limit their prospective comments to no more than three minutes. Trustees.
I have, I want to recognize Dr. Edwards, the president at Northeast for participating in the community outreach event that was at Wheatley High School just this past weekend. And also, I want to give a big shout out to him for getting the signs and the electricity at the Acres Home Campus and the Northeast Campus. Thank you so much.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank everyone who participated from HCC and the Martin Luther King Parade. I took my son, we saw it, and he was just, every year it just gets better. And so just to have, to know that HCC participates is, it's very rewarding, it feels so good. So, so thank you. As well, at the Central College, we had a really successful international student fair. Over 500 potential students went, and it was really great. So great job, Dr. Siddiqui, to you and your team, as well to all of the colleges. For the 2023, we just jumped right into 2023, and I mean, we're seeing across the district great student engagement, and, and, and that's what it takes as we work together to increase enrollment, is making sure that we're engaging our students, that they want to come to HCC because they are the best tool we have to market our college. So great work to each and every one of our, our leaders, Dr. Maldonado, to you, to your team, to our presidents and to their teams, great job, and let's do this. I know we can do this together, so thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, one, I'd like to give a, a great kudos and shout out to one of our own, Donnell Cooper, who put on a fabulous Black History Program with the Houston Frontiers Club, and it was televised, and so proud to have someone who works so well with us for what we do as well for Black History, but also what he's done for MLK is just extraordinary, and it's, it's a real commitment, and so was, just want to celebrate him, and I'd like to also salute all of our constituents out here in the community who've been participatory in, in the work and lending your voice, your thoughts, and your talent to what's happening here with Houston Community College with redistricting, and the participation has been great. I've, I've attended two of the community forums, of course, one for District Three and then my own for District Four just yesterday, and so just want to give a shout out to the community for being vigilant and, and staying tuned and participating in the process and lending your voice. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Flowers. Trustee Laredo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was an honor to represent the board at the convocation last week. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. Thank you to the chancellor and Ramell and your team did an excellent job. We had to start late because so many people wanted to join us, and there was such a traffic jam getting in, and that's an exciting way to start. And it was, I think the chancellor said it's one of the few times in several years where everybody got a chance to, to come together, and there was a real feeling of community there with the foundation trustees there as, or the foundation board there as well, and, you know, people doing the wave and everything. It was a beautiful, beautiful event, and I just, you know, want to thank the chancellor for, for hosting that, and I think we're going to have a great spring semester. Thank you.
I, I want to make sure I thank Board Services. It's, it's double duty right now, and so I, I just appreciate you guys, you're, you're working so hard and you're staying very late to host all these community forums, and so just know that your efforts and your commitment, it's not going unseen, so thank you so much.
You know, I must say, we all have to ditto that because when, I was like, oh my God, I didn't realize they were going to every forum. That's commendable. We appreciate you guys, we really do.
Trustee Wilson. Laredo, Trustee Laredo.
Good evening. I'd just like to say thank you, thank you to everyone. I finished, I'm glad that I was finished a year on a, in bed, and that I didn't get to go to all the activities, the ones that I really missed was graduation. That was the first time I had ever missed graduation, so, but I want to congratulate all the graduates from 2022. And I also, I helped Doneraki's Restaurant on their 48th year of serving Christmas for seniors, so we, we gave out a meal to 200 seniors, and they were really, really excited. So that was just my way of continuing to help out in the community, so thank you very much.
Trustee Wilson.
No report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Trustee Venable Stallworth. You're muted. There you go.
All right, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
On today, I attended an event hosted by Congressman Al Green. He was hosting Donald Craven Jr., the Undersecretary of Commerce for the Office of Minority Business Development, and the Undersecretary of the Commerce Department gave Houston Community College the highest honors for having a stellar MBDA office and said that it should be the example of the country. So I am just so very glad for the MBDA team. That is amazing. Congratulations. You are recognized by the Undersecretary of Commerce for the Office of Minority Business Development Association. Thank you so much, guys. That is truly a great honor, and that is my report.
All right. Great reports. Okay. Board meeting schedules. The following meetings are scheduled. Board retreat is scheduled for January 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Committee meeting is scheduled for February the 1st. Time will be determined. Committee of the whole meeting will be February the 1st at 4:00. Special meeting will be February 15th at 2:00 p.m., which will be a public hearing on redistricting, and we will also have board workshop. Regular meeting, February 15th at 4:00 p.m. The meetings will be held at the HCC Administration Building, 3100 Main Street, Second Floor Auditorium. The meetings will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act requirements. We want to note that redistricting community forums have been hosted in the respective HCC trustee districts from January 9, 2023, and will continue through February 2, 2023. We encourage the public to provide feedback regarding the proposed redistricting maps. The information on the forums is posted on the redistricting website. The public hearing on redistricting will be held on February 15, 2023 at 2:00 p.m. at 3100 Main Street, Second Floor Auditorium, Houston, Texas. We will now take this moment to wish Trustee Eva Laredo a happy, happy birthday, who celebrated a birthday on yesterday, January 17. We wish you many more birthday celebrations, Trustee Laredo. Happy birthday.
This concludes the chairman's chairperson's report. We will now hear from Dr. Maldonado with the chancellor's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees and audience, it's a pleasure to report to you this month. I want to start out with some data, as I tried to do the past year, and focus on the granularity of what we're doing and the impact that we're having. Now, one of the things that we focus on in our Achieving the Dream Cohorts is the overall transfer rate. This is within three years of entry to the college. Previously, I've shown you data that indicates approximately two-thirds of HCC students indicate that they plan to transfer to a four-year institution. This is an important goal for our students, and we work with our four-year partners to build articulation agreements and two-plus-two pathways to support our students in meeting their goals. Our three-year transfer rate, which is a proportion of students who successfully transfer within three years to a university, is an important metric of success. Now, this graph shows our three-year transfer rate over time, beginning with students who entered HCC in their first year in fall of 2015 through the students who entered in fall of 2020. We see that the three-year transfer rate has been relatively stable over time, including during the peak of the COVID pandemic. And at the end of a rate was, of this graph, we see an uptick in our three-year, three-year transfer rate, which indicates that our work in facilitating students' transfer has been successful. This is further indicated through our success in the Student Pathways Program, which we were recently recognized for by the Texas Association of Community Colleges by the Top State Award. The HCC leadership team and the chair and administration have been invited to present on the pathway success at the Board of Trustees Institute in February of 2023. That's coming up. Now, the next chart shows the same three-year transfer data by race and ethnicity. The results show increased rates for African-American and Hispanic students. In fact, the increase on the previous slide is due primarily to the increased rates of these two ethnic groups. Currently, as part of our QEP personalized learning pathways, as students enter HCC, we are working to have important conversations with them about their career and transfer goals. That is what the Pathways Project is really based on, listening to what the students' goals are and helping them achieve those goals. So we're increasing our, our student support in these areas to better prepare them to meet their goals. For 44 years, the Maury Women Helping Women Award has recognized those who have led the way in improving the lives of women and girls. The Maury Award is named to honor the late Maury McNeil, founding president of the Women's Center here in Houston and among the founders of Texas Women's Foundation, who set a standard of passion, spirit, and commitment for women's issues. Dr. Medlyn Barillo Hopkins, Vice Chancellor of Workforce Instruction and Southwest College President, will be recognized on April 27 at the Texas Women's Foundation Leadership Forum and Awards Luncheon. Dr. Barillo Hopkins is being recognized for building potential as an advocate for workforce education, diversity, and equity. She's been passionate in bringing innovative educational programs and partnerships to enhance upper economic mobility for underserved communities, and in particular, those that are residents and attendees of the Women's Center here in Houston. She's also been instrumental in developing technology summer camps for girls and increased female participation in computer science and non-traditional areas. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Barillo Hopkins for this prestigious award. She could not join us today, she's presenting on some of HCC's successes at a conference. As we heard from Dr. Venable Stallworth, the Undersecretary Honorable Don Cravens, the Minority Business Development Agency, was here yesterday to recognize HCC as a model for others to follow. Now, we've had a lot of discussions on the performance of our grants program over in MBDA, and this is a reaffirmation of everything we have found with all of the, the look that we've taken to the work of that great team. So I want to congratulate Dr. Ewen, Dr. Ma Donovo, and the entrepreneurial team for their success in making MBDA the best-in-class in the country. Congratulations. Snapshot of the agenda items coming forward in February, the, the slide shows the, that snapshot. We have approval of honorary degree recipients, a fall commencement report, report on external relations activities, as we'll have some experience under our belt with the Community College Week and the new funding formula in Austin. We'll have a second budget workshop and report on the 2024 budget development. We also have, from Dr. Gray's, enrollment strategy projections and targets amongst other topics. At this time, Madam Chair and trustees, I want to invite the United Student Council President Sahar Elhodari to the podium to provide the USC report for this month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, Chancellor Maldonado, respected faculty and staff. I am happy to be reporting the first United Student Council report for spring 2023 semester, and, and happy new year to everyone. Today, I will be speaking on the following items. We have USC Community Service Event, update on Self-Discovery Project, and finally, Community College Day. So since we had an incredible success in attracting around 40 students volunteering to plant trees in fall 2022, we have decided to collaborate once again with Houston Wilderness by hosting another fruit planting event on February 4th at the location of 4601 Danbury Street. And update on the Self-Discovery Project. The project focuses on providing a space to listen to HCC student body's goals, feelings, and future aspirations. This project is in the form of a video interviews of, of HCC students while asking them meaningful, mind-opening questions. As of January 3, the questions have been established, and filming will begin in the first week of February. And just to give you an idea about the question samples, question one would be, what does your ideal life look like if you, and the second question, if you continue doing, if you, if you continue doing what you are doing right now, where will you be in five years? The third question would be, if you met your future self, what advice do you think they would share with you? And the fourth question is, if you had more time to do what you love, what would you do? And finally, we have Community College Day at the Texas Capitol. Around 40 HCC Student Government Association officers, along with advisors, will travel to Austin for the opportunity to have a voice in the state, in the state legislation through addressing critical issues faced by community colleges on a state level. The date of travel will be on the 25th of January, and Community College Day takes place on the 26th. That concludes the USC progress report. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, Trust Chancellor Maldonado, we thank you for your continued support and thank you for listening.
And we thank you for your hard work.
Madam Chair, trustees, at this time, I invite Faculty Senate President David White to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. Madam Chair, trustees, I beg your indulgence for a moment. Before we go any further, I would like to recognize the faculty who took the time to attend in person tonight. Colleagues, can you stand? I tip my hat to you. Now, I bring this up because it takes all kinds to make faculty, and I do mean that in the very best possible way. Lord knows if all faculty taught the same, acted the same, looked the same, we wouldn't be doing a very good job. And we do want to do a good job. Faculty more so than most are keenly aware that our institutional north star, the ultimate student experience, fundamentally rests on faculty doing a good job. If our students walk out the doors as better versions of themselves because of what we helped them to learn, then we've done our jobs. And I say this because faculty hold certain concerns about pressing issues that could have negative effects on those jobs, and we do enjoy working with the administration to keep on the right path. And did I say enjoy? Yes, I did say. Yes, I did say that. We enjoy working with the administration. Indeed, one of our esteemed vice chancellors will be attending Senate this very Friday, and we're very glad to have her. At the same time, we are also keenly aware that this administration ultimately takes direction from this board. And that's my message tonight to this board. When faculty ask you to pay attention to thing X, it's because we can see the path ahead. We're the closest ones to it, and we can see the mud holes and the logs up close. Yet, there are some obvious issues, compensation, workloads, hiring practices. We have a list, but we're not going to go into that because this is not the time and place to go into these things detail one by one, far from it. And again, this administration has worked with faculty to get big problems solved. Notice, we have not come here tonight with pitchforks and torches. Yet, as I said earlier, we know that this board sets the agenda and tone for this administration. And so to you, trustees, we want to say that faculty want HCC to be the college of choice for Houston. We want HCC to lead and not follow. At the same time, faculty see certain things, and we have concerns. And that is why we ask that you come talk with us, not at us, not to us, but with us. I have heard the passion coming from the trustees. I've had some very productive one-on-one meetings with you. I can hear your passion. I enjoy hearing your passion. Now, I invite you trustees to come and hear ours. Now, I've already spoken to several of you individually about our get-together next month, and I will be sending a more formal invite via Board Services very soon with full details, and I will also attempt to follow up individually with each of you. But we do really want to see you. Someone asked me earlier tonight, why are so many faculty here tonight? It's because we care. We want you to know that we care, and we are watching you. Thank you.
On that ominous note, Madam Chair, I conclude my report.
Here now, the citizens. The citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees here, complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Board. Okay, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm sorry, but I think it's about nine.
Item nine. It's item, yeah, item nine.
Is it nine?
Is it the monthly report or the revisions to the?
That's the revisions to the bylaws.
Yes, A9.
Nine. Okay. Is there a motion to, okay. Item nine will be pulled from the consent agenda. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without item nine?
So moved second.
Okay, it has been moved in second. Item nine has been pulled from the consent agenda, so we're now ready to vote.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
Received.
Hey Sharon, I miss something missing up here. I'm a yes. Oh, there it is.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Um, Madam Chair, may I, point of privilege, I just wanted to call out those that donated that were part of the consent agenda.
Second, and then I'll let you do it after I, I just want to make a note.
Just the names, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, item A9 is going to be moved to the end of the agenda, so now you can go ahead.
Just thank you to those who donated, Bleak Art, Gilbert Muniz, Chloe Dow, Adrian Moreno, PepsiCo, Frito Lay, Wanda Beatty, and Nex Flex. Just thank you for your donation to the college. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. Dito, dito. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve item A on the topic for discussions and our actions?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second. Chancellor Maldonado will introduce the item.
Madam Chair, this item is related to the revisions to local policy CAK and CDC local. I'm not familiar with the specifics of the justification of pull it, but I offer any answer to any questions the trustees might have.
Any questions?
Which item is this?
We're on topics, we're on, we're on. Here.
Was on the pulled item? Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on, no, we're on 10.
No, that was approved on the consent agenda.
So then go down to topics for, yes.
No, no, just A. 9A was moved to the end.
My apologies, trustees.
I'm sorry, that's A, item A, professional development and training services. 9A is at the end, yeah. We're on A, now, that's 9A.
I went off, I went off the map, so I'm back on the map now.
I was like, okay.
And trustees, this, this item is to authorize me to execute a contract with absolute clarity consulting to provide professional development, training services for pathway advisors. These are the student services advisors we have related to the pathways that I just mentioned in my report. This is for Student Engagement and Success Department in accordance with RP 2307. The contract for this is not to exceed 194,925. The funding source for this is a HERF grant. Now, Mr. Heinz and Dr. Gray's will, can answer any questions the trustees might have on the details of this item.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Venable Stallworth.
Can, can the administration tell us how many pathways advisors we have, please?
Sure, thank you, Madam Trustee. So we have full-time, roughly about 109 full-time pathways advisors, but does not include our part-time numbers currently.
Okay, and these are permanent full-time or these grant-based positions? If some grant runs out, we don't have these pathways advisors anymore?
No, ma'am, these are all hard money-funded positions. These are the positions that are aligned to support all of our guided pathways work.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Wilson.
Is this a one-time deal? After this HERF money's gone, do we have to take it out of the budget for next year or to let those seven people go?
We will be continuing to develop training as part of the new work of having a workforce that's cross-trained and up to date with the current methods and technology. So we anticipate continuing the training. This is a fundamental training. We brought in a large number of advisors as part of the, the timing was related to the pandemic, so the HERF funding is available for this funding. I expect funding in the upcoming budget cycle to be significant, but not this high for this one item.
Any other questions? Trustee Laredo.
I know that they mentioned that we have 109 full-time, so from the part-time, will they be allowed to go through this training as well?
Dr. Gray, do we have any part-time advisors in this cohort?
We, it is very likely, Chancellor, we will, let me rephrase that, yes. Not only part-time advisors, even some of our admissions advisors who are supporting the pathways work. I do want to emphasize, though, that we are prioritizing the onboarding for the full-time staff, since these are the individuals who are assigned caseloads to each of our students.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that item?
Here, that's a quick question. So these are pathways advisors, and you'd mentioned we have 109 pathways advisors already on staff. How many of our students are in the pathways program as a percentage of our student body?
So as a reminder, Trustee Glazer, as students are entering the institution, we have an intentional discussion about their career choices. So many of them may come in with an interest in seeking a Level 1 certificate or perhaps a Level 2 certificate, and during the first semester, each of those students who have been identified as a semester credit hour-seeking student are attached to a student, and they are assigned a case manager, if you will. The purpose and role of those career and pathways advisors is, number one, to help facilitate the onboarding for those students and ensuring that they are taking the courses that leads to successful completion, but to also encourage them to take advantage of the stackable credential. So if they're starting and entering the institution as a Level 1 certificate, we want to make accessible to them the options for continued pursuit for post-secondary attainment. So entryway in Level 1, alignment with the pathway for a Level 2 certificate, and obviously linkage to an associate's degree, associate's applied arts, applied science, and what have you.
So how many students, as a percentage of our student population, are involved in this?
So all of our semester credit hour students are assigned a career and pathways advisor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now vote on item A.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
Received.
Okay, received. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item B, automotive frame straightening rack system, project number RFP dash?
Second.
Dash 23-13. It has been moved in second. Dr. Maldonado?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, this approval is for car frame straightening. It's a collision repair method that corrects damage to the structural frame of a vehicle, and this is a recommendation to authorize me to execute a contract with VSG Chief Automotive to provide this frame straightening rack system for the Northline Campus Automotive Technology Training Center in accordance with RFP C 23-13. The contract amount is not to exceed $135,231.50. The project will be funded through the fiscal year 2023 Carl Perkins Federal Grant Budget.
Are there any questions or discussion? Trustee Glazer? Oh, I saw your hand. No questions, no discussion? Oh, Trustee Wilson?
There was some talk a couple months ago about closing that campus or moving, where does that stand? Is that consolidating it with North Forest or?
We're still assessing that. We just received the master plan study from our consultants sometime last week. So we're assessing the facility use and looking at consolidating as part of our review of that, and we'll be coming to the Board this spring with recommendations on that.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we will now vote on item B.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
Received.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of nine to zero.
There are motion to approve item C, Chevrolet Tahoe Police Package Project Number RFP C 23-7.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Chancellor Maldonado?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, this is the use of a cooperative interlocal contract to get the national best practice procurement that allows us to leverage HCC's buying power. And this is for authorization for me to execute a contract with Parkway Chevrolet to purchase 24 new Chevrolet Tahos with police packages in support of the HCC Police Department in accordance with RFP C 23-07. And as the Board will recall, that the funding for this project is coming from HERF funds. Cost of the 24 vehicles and ancillary equipment under the resulting RFP contract is $53,299.82 per unit for a total not to exceed $1,279,195.68. As I said, this is funded through HERF.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes, I was just curious, do, will the police officers take these vehicle home or will they be parked?
I think there's a mix of depending on what the assignment of the officers are. I'm not sure exactly what the schedules are. Marshall, can you answer that more specific than I can?
Sure, Chancellor, they're not all taken home. There's a couple of officers that may take them home for special reasons, but that's not our standard practice.
Okay, and will the insurance come out of the HERF funding?
The insurance?
Mm-hmm, for the new purchased vehicles.
No, the college will pay the insurance on our automobiles through our major policy. These are not additional cars, these are replacement cars.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But we will be retiring some vehicles as a result of this procurement.
Yes.
Any other questions? Trustee Laredo, and then Trustee Wilson.
I was going to ask also about those, about the cost of the insurance, because now they're going to be new, so it's going to be higher. And so, and also about the ones that, do we trade in? Are we trading the old for the new? Buying them out there or what?
I don't know if we trade them in or we auction them.
We discussed this with our outside Hush Blackwell, our HERF council, and the way that this will work is that we have ordered, or will be ordering after this vote, hopefully 24 replacement vehicles, and they'll be outfitted with the police packages, but also the COVID packages. The second part of this that was presented to the Board and approved that is taking place with this is that we tend to take the other vehicles that are in addition to the force that are not part of the 24, we outfit them with the same COVID packages that, so they all have the same COVID protection. And we can't have the new vehicles that have it all, and then the other guys that have to drive, the older ones don't get that protection. So we're retrofitting those, and then we will auction off the 24 vehicles that we're replacing, and those proceeds will be used to help offset the cost. And that was a good point with the HERF council, that we're not trying to double-dip by getting new vehicles and keeping the old money, vehicle auction off and keeping that money. We'll be contributing that to the retrofit of the other, older vehicles.
Trustee Wilson, didn't you, you say?
Are they electric or gas?
They're gas.
Trustee Glazer.
The, you said we're going to be retrofitting some existing vehicles. Is that going to come up in a separate item later?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any additional discussion? Okay, we will now vote on item C.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item D, personnel agenda?
On moved.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Maldonado will introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, these request approval of four faculty positions. Two are faculty coming from the outside of the institution in nursing and in medical assisting. And there's two within the institution that are moving from a chair to a faculty position in engineering technology and one in mathematics instructor to an associate chair. Those are listed in your agenda packets. Glad to answer any questions that you might have on these. Request your approval.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, we will now vote on item D.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of nine to zero.
Madam Chair, I request that we combine E, F, and G and accept them as report items unless there's questions from board members.
We can combine E and F. G, we have to go into closed session.
Is a report item, right? Okay. But you want E and F? Okay.
Yeah, E and F.
I'd like to modify my request to that. Thank you.
Because we can go ahead and do it and still going? Okay. She said we can do them all. And then we got to go into closed session for G.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we, let me ask the question, Madam Chair. Were we allowed to ask the question about G?
About E, F, and G? Or which?
Right now we're E and F only, correct?
Yes, we're going into closed session. That's what I was going to tell her. She wanted to ask about E and F. She could. Okay. Trustee Venable-Stalworth, if you had questions about E or F, you can, but questions for G, we have to ask after closed session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no question.
Okay. All right. These are report items, no action is required, right? So Chancellor?
Thank you, trustees. So we're combining E and F. Be glad to answer any questions that the board might have on those.
So no one has questions on those items?
Not there. We submitted them as presented.
Okay, the board would now adjourn to a closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, 551.072, and/or 551.074, the Open Meetings Act, as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the board on any matter considered in closed sessions such as final action, vote or decision shall be taken up in the open meeting or a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof. The meeting is held by adjourned to executive session at?
6:15 PM.
Madam Chair, everything that is to be discussed in closed session, we will do back there. We don't have to go back, right? We're just going back one time?
One time.
Got it. Thank you.
It's on. I can talk louder, but you might regret that. The open portion of this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Houston Community College System is now reconvened at?
7:47 PM.
Thank you, Sharon. So, we are now going to vote on item... What was it? Eight? Eight, rather, nine of the consent agenda that we have discussed in closed session. So, do we need a motion? Do we have a motion to?
I'm moved.
Consider? Item... Thank you, sorry, I forgot the words. Okay. Are there any questions from any of my fellow trustees?
Yes.
We're voting on A9, is that correct?
Could I get who second, please?
Second.
Pleasure. Thank you.
I opened and then pleasure second.
So, it's item A is an apple nine?
Apple nine, okay.
Like the number of trustees. So, if there are no questions, we're going to vote on item A9 from the consent agenda. Trustees, please vote.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
Received.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to one.
Madam Chair?
I'd like to nominate you, Dr. Cynthia Linton Gary, as board chair.
Second.
Third.
Are there any other nominations?
I move we close the nominations.
A second. Well, thank you, colleagues, for trusting me and trusting my leadership.
You accept?
I will not fail. I accept.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, when there's only one nominee, that person is elected by acclamation, just to make sure we've got the right language on the minutes.
Okay. Okay. Now... You know... They made me nervous. So, now, are there any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Madam Chair Monica Reichardt for vice chair.
A second.
Thank you, I accept.
Okay, this has been moved to second. Are we ready to vote?
Ask for other nominations.
Have we got who? Oh, I'm sorry, any other nomination?
I was just going to move that the nominations be closed.
Well? Thank you, trustees.
Congratulations. Okay, we will now move to nominations for secretary.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Reichardt.
I nominate trustee Eva Laredo for secretary.
There's second. Any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I move the nominations be closed.
I accept.
So, we got? Okay. Hold on. That's it? Okay. The... Who? Me? Everybody? We have been nominated by acclamation. The board chair Cynthia Linton Gary, vice chair Monica Reichardt, secretary Eva Laredo.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, there's so many pages out the bed. Okay, the meeting is hereby adjourned at?
Seven.
Congratulations to our new board office.
Okay, I got to run.
Thank you.